Welcome, everybody who's on the web with us. We appreciate your attending the meeting. Madam Clerk, if you will do the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Mellon.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
We have eight members present and one absent.
All right. Hopefully, Member Wilson, Williams, Wilson, our missing member will join us before we're through. Announcements, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I do not have any this evening.
Oh, okay.
So that will move us into public hearings.
Right, and I understand we have one, so I'm going to remind the Speaker of the time limit, and that's 10 minutes, and other supporters will have three minutes as well, so we can proceed.
Thank you. Tonight's public hearing is regarding the request to establish a Commercial Rehabilitation Act District for 218, 222, 224, and 226 South Washington Avenue.
You mentioned that the purpose of a public hearing is for members of the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive information from the speakers for consideration regarding specific action being requested of us. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please begin by stating your name and your position on the subject of the public hearing. Public hearings are not a question-and-answer session, therefore questions must not be directed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. So, we have, who do we have with us starting today?
Eric Tankersley from Shaheen Development.
Welcome, Mr. Tankersley. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I am here today on behalf of Shaheen Development, and I'm presenting our mixed-use commercial facility project located on South Washington Avenue, downtown Saginaw. What I'd like to do today is I'll spend a few minutes discussing a little bit of the background on the project, as well as the reasoning behind our request for the granting of the Commercial Redevelopment Act. So, the project was, I'm sorry, I'm going to take a step back. So Shaheen Development acquired the property in 2008, and at that time, the facility was so poorly deteriorated, the second floor could not be accessed at the time of purchase. It was in 2012 that, due to the safety concerns and poor condition of the property, that it was demolished by the betterment of downtown Saginaw. The Commercial Rehabilitation District would consist of four vacant, economically distressed South Washington Avenue parcels located between Valerie's Restaurant and the Spicer Buildings, better known as Parcels, ending 115, 114, 113, and 112 in the city of Saginaw. The proposed use would be new commercial mixed-use construction, and the development would provide an immediate local and economic benefit to the downtown Saginaw community through an increase in local commercial activity. I apologize. Job creation, urban revitalization, and an increase in the number of community residents. Shaheen Development is very excited about this $1.25 million development that shall consist of 6,800 square feet in a three-story mixed-use building that will include, as mentioned, first-floor retail commercial space consisting of a new bank tenant, as well as four residential apartments on the two upper floors. This project plays an important economic development role in reversing the deterioration of the tax base and is expected to bring at least eight new jobs to downtown Saginaw. Shaheen Development has spent the previous eight years recruiting the state bank, which will be located on the first floor, and has come across a number of challenges in finding a suitable tenant for the facility. The first of which, as we neared, an eight-year agreement with the bank was to, originally the bank was scheduled to pay property taxes through their lease. In order to secure the commitment from the bank, the developer went ahead and made the decision to pay the property taxes at their request. The second, and more important, piece of information would be that in order to construct the facility and get the bank in on the first-floor level, two second-floor and two third-floor apartments are being created at the request of the municipality to abide by local regulatory guidelines. What I would like to do is open up for any initial questions, as well as see if there are any further commentary on the project.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. There does not be a question-and-answer period, however. Mr. Tankersley, we don't normally do, and it isn't allowed to do, questions and answers now, so we do appreciate your presentation. If there's anything else, we'd be happy to hear it.
Questions could be asked at the time that the resolution is considered on the agenda.
And Mr. Tankersley, you'll be prepared to be available, then?
That I will, yes.
Thank you, okay. Is there anyone else that you have in support of your request for the public hearing today?
No, I believe we may have some comments from the Saginaw Future, but they would not be a part of my presentation.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this topic or has comments on this topic other than the presenter? Anyone else in the public?
Yes.
The second time.
Kathy Miller.
Oh, yes, Kathy Miller?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, councilmembers. This is Kathy Miller, speaking on behalf of Saginaw Future. I just wanted to take a moment to let you know the importance of this project from an economic development standpoint. The property where it's being built has sat vacant for years, as Eric mentioned. Though it was used as a parking lot, it really has not been much of a contributor to downtown Saginaw. The new building will not only increase the tax base, but bring in a new business with eight employees, new residents. One of the biggest challenges that we've seen in downtown and the riverfront really as a whole has been a lack of diverse housing options. People who live in downtown are much more likely to frequent businesses in that downtown, so any opportunity for more housing is great for this area. Though this development is somewhat small in scale, this type of incremental development is what Saginaw needs to restore the vibrancy that we have downtown now. It's really been building over the last few years. The design of the building meets the Riverfront Mixed-Use Zoning Code, which required it to be built as a traditional downtown building would have been in the past. It will fit into the existing context of downtown and make a beautiful addition to the block that it's located on. At Saginaw Future, we work with developers on finding locations that make sense for their business, and it's really not an easy task. Unfortunately, there's especially been a challenge in this area historically, which we're just so excited about this project. We're excited about the outcome of eight new jobs in downtown, great jobs, and we're really confident that this project will continue the catalytic economic development trend that we've been seeing over the last few years in downtown.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Is there anyone else to speak on this topic or have comments on the topic at this time? One final time, is there anyone else to speak on this topic at this time? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
A move, more.
Is there a second?
Port Williams.
I'll support. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on closing the public hearing? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, your next order of business is public input.
All right, and we want to welcome all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly, so we don't miss what you have to say. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching, SGTV, and to the council, so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to the city staff. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker tonight is Kathy Miller.
Kathy, one more time.
Councilmember, thank you so much for your time and listening to me speak twice today. I wanted to let you know about an event that will be happening on Saturday, September 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. in Old Town Saginaw on Court Street, and I want to invite all of you. Back in December, the Great Mural Project, which is a small volunteer group made up of myself, your councilmember Jamie Forbes, and Don Goodrow. In December, we applied for a grant from the Bloomberg Philanthropies through their Asphalt Art Initiative. We ended up finding out we were awarded $25,000 to complete three asphalt murals. If you're wondering what an asphalt mural is, it's a mural that is painted on asphalt or street. Right from the beginning, we've been working with the city's engineering department to determine the best possible locations for these, this series of murals that we're going to be doing, and we've continued to work alongside them to ensure the safety of this project. Louis Taylor, Travis Hare, Beth London, Bill Carrawatt, and John Stempel have been great partners. We truly could not have done this if it wasn't for their help. At this point, we're pretty far in the process of planning, with the event coming up in two weeks. For the murals and the event, we have hired seven local artists who will be divided up among the three intersections. The intersections are Fortin, Michigan, Fortin-Hamilton, and Ezra Russ and Fordmeat. Along with those seven artists, they will also have other team members. There will be approximately 15 artists actively painting at the event. All murals are being designed under the theme of diversity and will represent the various elements of our community. We held a committee meeting a few weeks ago, where the artists and representatives from various cultural and community groups had a conversation about how their culture can be represented in art form. We had a lot of ideas, a really great conversation, and we've been really excited looking at what has come out of this in the design. As you are all aware, the bridge has a lot of symbolism in Saginaw, and we're hoping to use these murals as a way of connecting the two sides by incorporating similar elements, colors, and of course, the same in all three. We also received a grant from the Downtown Development Authority to fund local musicians, food vendors, and a videographer to capture the transformation. This funding will allow the event to have mild entertainment while still offering a wide-open space for socially-distanced events. We hope these murals and the event will bring people to the city and overall beautify the area where they are to be painted. Again, so you all remember, the event is September 26th, at 10:00 a.m. through 10:00 p.m. We do have a rain date for the following weekend, October 3rd and 4th. We hope you all can make it, and please follow us on Facebook, The Great Mural Project. We do have a Facebook event for this, and we are going to continue to do projects, and we'd love your support through it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Timothy Bouchard.
Mr. Bouchard.
Yeah, hi. I'm just speaking, thank you for listening. I'm speaking on behalf of the neighborhood that I live in, over by 611 South Bond. There is a drug rehab house next door to me, and it is run fairly poorly, very poorly. There is, like, nobody ever there to control these girls. They're unruly as can be. I've tried to talk to them, I've been spit at. They don't have a sign to call anybody. It's called the Hope Foundation. I've talked to the director, I can't get nothing done here. One of the girls, I was advised to film them guys' video. One of the girls saw me video, she started screaming rape. Now, this young lady that was screaming this had the cops called for her yelling at and came out. I explained to the cops what was going on, and then they just left. But that young lady there is there because she's on rehab, and she's the one passing out the medication, the narcotics. I don't think that's legal. The reason I'm bringing this up is because my sister was in one of these rehabs, but she was in a good one. They had a lady living in there 24/7, and they had her, the lady living there, made sure all the girls followed the rules, gave them chores each day. These girls next door don't have that. My sister lost her life in 2016 because of drugs, and she was in a good one and still lost her life. These girls here, it ain't the girls that I blame, it's the way it's run, and I just don't feel they got a chance over there. Like I said, my sister I lost because of drugs, and she was in a good rehab, and this one here is just, it's like a money pit, not a money pit, but a money maker for the people that own it. And I just appreciate if somebody can check it out, make sure everything's proper, and get somebody that stays there to enforce the rules. Their cameras don't work. They say they got video cameras, but they don't work. The one girl standing there told me they don't work. So, other than that, I really appreciate you guys letting me sit in on this and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard.
Our next speaker is Agnes Johnson.
One more time. Ms. Johnson, if you're there, please call, come in. Madam Clerk, why don't we go on as she comes?
Let's go to the next one.
Right, if she does, we'll come back if she does call in.
Okay, let's go to Debbie Malconian.
Ms. Malconian, welcome again.
Hello.
Hello.
I mean...
Who's it, Debbie?
Hi, dear. Just start talking.
Yes, you're all set, Debbie, go ahead.
All right. Debbie Malconian, 2116 Adams Boulevard. I'm here this evening to discuss traffic concerns and potential solutions. Twelve years ago, we did do a traffic study, the Engineering and Traffic Department. Paula Dean did that, and a very large document was produced and made recommendations and things that could not happen as a result. What we wound up getting were yield signs on various corners of the boulevard, but yet the traffic could go straight from Alexander to Graham, and then from Graham to Congress. So it was still a speedway with people only having to yield on the cross streets. We presented an idea to our association at our July meeting, explaining that possibly we could look into the idea of speed bumps along Adams Boulevard. The association seemed to be very in favor of it, and we explained that we would have a petition, and every homeowner on Adams Boulevard would have to sign the petition, saying yes, they agreed, or no, they did not agree. That has been completed, and the next step, we felt, was presenting the idea to the city council. At our meetings, there were a few city council members present, so they were aware that we were pursuing this idea and wanted to present it to the council with our facts. We do have the completed petitions. I know that the information we sent to Janet was probably too late for you guys to get a copy of the letters and the petitions, but they are available. I did speak with Phil Carrawatt, and he's willing to sit down with me and discuss these ideas. But the speed bumps would be removable, they would be taken off before winter, so it does not affect snow clouds, and they would be stored in the Adams Boulevard shed that we have. The cost would be divided between the 84 households on the boulevard, and for each resident, it would cost $8.54. We would also include signs that say "Speed Bump Ahead," and, which would be included in the cost of the equipment. Let's give it a try. I mean, we really feel as if the yield signs haven't worked, and anything we've tried, which have been traffic slowdown, has not worked. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malconian.
Our next speaker, first of all, is Agnes Johnson connected yet? Agnes?
I didn't say everything.
Okay. Let's go on to Kevin Hayes.
Mr. Hayes.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Hayes. I'm a junior at Michigan State University, majoring in political science pre-law, and my address is 2007 Adams Boulevard. Of the 84 addresses that we've collected signatures from, we've gotten 61 yeses, five no's, and have not heard from 18 of the addresses, two of which are vacant. This means that for our speed bump project, we already have over 72% approval from the residents, and our approval will only stay the same or go up as we speak with more residents. The speed bumps that we're looking at will be purchased from www dot traffic safety store dot com. They are approximately two and a quarter inches tall, six feet wide across the street, and one foot long, deep, however you want to go about it. They're rubber, so they'll be held in the ground with stakes, which, as Debbie said, means they're removable, so in the wintertime, the clouds can get through, there's not as many people out and about, and the speeding is just not as much of an issue at that time. They're black and yellow, so they're very visible at all times of day or night, and as Debbie said, we will have signs posted before each bump, which read "Caution: Speed Bumps Ahead." The total cost for the speed bump and the sign is $735.40 approximately, which breaks down to about $8.55 per household theoretically, if everyone was to contribute. Several residents, however, have said that they would contribute more than $8.55, and even some of the people who initially told us no, said they would still contribute to our project if we had a majority. Now, I've lived here for 17 years since I was three years old. I've grown up here with all my best friends. We've had countless close calls with reckless driving in the past. I currently have two little siblings who live and play out here, and several other neighbors who are young that play out in the street, and I want them to be safe at all times. And I also want to make it clear that there's still plenty of room for bikers, scooters, rollerbladers, et cetera, to go around the bumps, but they'll be wide enough so that cars cannot avoid them. And, you know, I enjoy walking my dog every night, riding my bike at night, and I feel like I should not have to duck and dodge traffic every time I go out. All we can do is give this a shot. We've tried everything else, and we hope that we can have your support going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. These will be referred to the city manager, the request will be for action or response. Is Agnes Johnson on again? We will try one more time. Agnes Johnson? Madam Clerk, I think we can move on.
Well, Mayor, you are now at the remarks of council.
Well, hello. At this time, I want to remind councilmembers of the three-minute time limit. Today, we begin with Councilmember Ostash.
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, everybody, and thanks for all of our public speakers coming out to speak. Mr. Bouchard, sorry for your loss, but thanks for bringing this to our attention. And also Kathy, really looking forward to the Big Mural Project, and I'll be looking for that Facebook event to come out. For Debbie and Kevin from the Adams Boulevard area, I feel your passion for this, and thanks for bringing this to our attention. It is known that I've spoken before here from the council seat, and I've talked about some of the speed in the city, and especially with my street here, I'm living on Hoyt Avenue, it does seem to be a problem, and I hope that even folks as drivers start to, start looking at themselves and driving a little bit more safely in the city. Mayor, real quick, just a couple announcements here. I did do an event with the Great Lakes Bay Health Centers, where we did an online virtual event and a tour of their facility, and some videos have been excellent, excellent exercise that we did there, so I will have some more information on that in the future, and they're going to be doing some more events. And she actually highlighted some of the things they've been doing during the COVID-19 epidemic that we've been having here and good services for our residents that live in the city. Another exciting news here, the Lee Mansion in Lee Commons actually posted on their Facebook page, they're actually getting together now for the first time in doing one of the visions that they've had for the house. So this is going to be Building Assessment 101, and what this is, they're doing this in conjunction with the Michigan Historic Preservation Network. So there's more information, you can actually go to their Facebook page, there's a link there to register. So what this workshop is for is for people that are looking to buy an old home and they're going to have to do repairs on it, so this workshop is actually going to, it's going to be an event to actually help you get those projects off the ground. So this is a really good thing, and I'm glad that they're putting that out there and putting that together for folks. So again, that's on their Facebook page for the Lee Mansion, if you're interested in that. And that is all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Balls.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a lot of comments to say this evening, but I would like to thank Shaheen Development Corporation for all the things that they've been doing in the tri-city area. People don't go in business just to donate their money to build buildings and stuff like that, they go in there to make money, and I'm glad that he can make some money in the city of Saginaw and continue to build up our community. It's a beautiful thing. Thank you, Mrs. Shaheen, I appreciate it. Other than that, I don't have a lot to say this evening. I would like to report that the African-American Festival this year was a virtual reality festival, and it went off real well. They did a lot of different things on there, they had a lot of speakers, they came in and talked about all the good things that happened in the city of Saginaw, and they tried to encourage people to go into business, and I just do the right thing, and I think it went real well. Other than that, I would like to say too, to the young people in the city of Saginaw, please do not give up hope. There's a lot of things in the community that can help you out, get involved in skilled trades. We need a lot of tradesmen in the city of Saginaw, all over the state of Michigan, matter of fact, all over the country, we need tradesmen. And there's a lot of different organizations that's willing to help young people get involved in skilled trade. So if anybody knows anybody that's interested, they can get with me. I have some connections with that, with the Youth Build Development Corporation near Saginaw, the 126 South Weta. The building's really looking good, the kids that came down there and helped put the building together, and it's really looking good for our students here in the city of Saginaw. So we're looking forward to that, it's been something that's going to really grow here in the city of Saginaw. So, other than that, Mr. Mayor, that's all my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Mellon.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I would also like to thank all of our public input speakers. I'm very happy that our citizens have gotten more used to the format we use here, and they're much more willing to call in and share their comments with us. I have just a couple of comments today. I wanted to point out that another Saginaw-based company has shown its commitment to our city. Cinderella Incorporated on South Jefferson is remodeling and updating its over 100-year-old headquarters building, and this is part of a continuing trend of investment in our city core, goes right along with the project Shaheen Corpus Development is proposing. Something we're doing as a city, the demolition of the old parking ramp number one is exposing some Saginaw history. The former Alfano Shoe Building to the west of the site has old painted signs on the brick building. It appears there will be a complete Coca-Cola billboard-style sign and a couple additional signs as the work progresses. I think we'll see those, and I've alerted Tom Tromb... And I've alerted Tom Trombley over at the Castle Museum of Saginaw History to keep an eye on those. I think it'll be very interesting. The parking ramp occupies what used to be one of our city market sites, so these would have been very good sites for signs on the side of that building. So I'm looking forward to what shows up there as they continue their work. And when they built the parking ramp to facilitate protecting the brick building, it protected the signs. These are nearly pristine for what is approximately sixty-some-years-old signs. No sun has hit them or anything, so they're looking very nice. We'll keep that, more news in the future on that, I hope. And those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Scherzer.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I too want to thank our public speakers for bringing forward your concerns, but also for the great news, and I look forward to the Paint-a-Thon that's taking place on the twenty-sixth. So thank you to our speakers. I do want to report that the Partnership Network here in Saginaw, which is formerly the Saginaw County Business and Education Partnership, currently has some financial assistance for individuals who are in need of transportation. So if you are having troubles getting to work, or you are in need of transportation-related support, please contact the Partnership Network. They do have great services and programs available to employees right here in the city of Saginaw. And then I also want to wish a local roofing and construction company, Renee Torres and TNS Construction, is traveling down to Lake Charles, Louisiana, to assist with the hurricane disaster that took place. They are roofers and labors right from the city of Saginaw, going down there and assisting. So best wishes to them and for their safe travels down to Louisiana. That is all I have, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to remind everyone, please wear your mask.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank our public speakers. I'd like to do a shout-out to all of us, all of our citizens. Thank you so much for registering to be counted. Our census count, I looked at the numbers on yesterday, we are ranked number five in the state of Michigan. We are now at sixty-nine point five-four percent. We were at thirty-seven, so yay, Saginaw, yay, we did. The other thing I'd like to do is, for our listeners, please absentee ballots are going to be out. If you can wait till October the first, they are going to mail them out. If you haven't received one by October first, please contact, or let, or let's wait to see. The problem is, is that we don't want to not have enough ballots to do what we need to do. I know I'm probably out speaking, out speaking out of my turn, but I'm encouraging everybody, what I am encouraging you to do is drop them in the drop box if you can, or take them into the city clerks once you receive them. All of my fellow council persons, as you know, on September the twenty-ninth, MML will have its final conference for the year. I hope that you all have signed up, and it's going to be an exciting venture. If you go on mml dot org right now, on the Facebook page, you'll get a chance to see me do my first dance, my exit dance out of the president's robe. We're just excited about this because we're doing it virtual. Once again, I'd like to thank everyone who came out and supported all of the efforts that we've been doing for the census. Thank you, citizens, thank you, citizens, and most of all, I want to thank the staff because they were phenomenal. They were just, they got in there, you wouldn't have told if they were staff people because they acted just like we acted. So I want to thank everybody for helping in that venture. Thanks a lot. That's me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Moore. Next, we have Councilmember Bench.
Good evening, everybody. I too want to thank our public speakers for calling in tonight. I'll touch on Mr. Hayes and Mrs. Malconian's concerns over in the Adams Boulevard because I live in that neighborhood, and I drive Adams Boulevard frequently, and I can testify to what they are saying. We bike over there frequently, and while I try to mind my speed certainly because there are lots of signs reminding me to slow down, they are not effective, people are not paying attention to them. I don't like letting my kids bike over there by themselves just because it's, people do whip through there. So I applaud their efforts and just appreciate that the Adams Boulevard is so well organized that they are able to accomplish these things for their neighborhood, and that they should be just, you know, commended for their efforts and the way they look out for each other. I also want to reiterate what Mayor Pro Tem Moore said, because usually we try not to repeat each other too much, but what she said definitely needs to be repeated. When your ballot applications come out to the House, fill them out. Don't put them in the mail if you don't have to, drive them down to the city clerk's office and walk up in with your mask on from a safe social distance, or just put them in the drop box in the back. And the same goes when they nail you your ballot, fill it out. Usually, I encourage people to vote absentee and to kind of take their time and peruse the issues, but start doing your homework now, especially if you plan on nailing it in, because we are going to have a fantastic turnout, regardless how the election turns out. We know that those numbers are going to be high, we're going to probably look at fifty percent turnout from what I understand with the requests around the county for absentee ballots and just what we've seen in previous presidential elections. So this is an important election, we've got lots on the ballot, we have a school millage that we need to consider, and it is very important as a parent of young school-aged kids, one of whom just started his freshman year and another just starting middle school, please, please, please give serious consideration into investing in our school district because it is worth it. My kids are worth it, your kids are worth it, our kids are worth it, even if you don't have kids, because we're all better off when the next generation's smarter and more prepared. So that's all I have tonight. I hope everyone is well. Take care.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Fords.
Thank you, Mayor. First, Mr. Burchard, my condolences on the loss of your sister. I have a history of addiction in my family too, and I know how heartbreaking it is, I know our staff will get back to you on this. For Ms. Malconian and Mr. Hayes, I just want to reiterate what Annie said, that it is some beautiful community organizing, and I love it. I'm sure you'll hear from staff soon. And Cassie, thanks for coming tonight. I'm, just like she said, I'm a part of the Great Merrill Project, it's one of the most wonderful things I'm involved in in Saginaw, and I hope that you'll all come out to September twenty-sixth, the Paint-a-Thon. And I'd also like to thank city staff for working on this, they have just been one-hundred percent helpful and done everything they possibly can to make this project happen, and I'm really thankful for that. Just to beat a dead horse on the census, this is so very important, and I've been helping through my role with STARS on a couple, a series of three census events that will take place at City Hall. We had our first one this last Friday, and we were able to get enough folks to fill out their census that we brought in two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars over the next ten years. And I think that that really shows how much impact this census has. It's just a huge thing. And so I would like to thank staff for all their hard work on these census events, they just do so much, and of course, our Mayor Pro Tem Moore for coming out, and I hope that all the rest of the folks on council will try to come out. So it's this Friday, the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth, from eleven to one, back behind City Hall, there'll be food and music, and it'll be a great time. There'll also be information about how to register to vote and to request an absentee ballot. So thank you for the clerk and her staff for coming out for this as well. I want to remind everyone that we are still looking for poll workers. If you're interested in working the November election, please apply ASAP with the application that's online or in the clerk's office, but you can always apply after that. For the next elections, we'll need people always, and so please consider signing up to be a poll worker. This whole absentee ballot thing is so important. Remember, you can come in and fill your absentee ballot right away, once they arrive, of course, in a couple of weeks, or you can always request your ballot be mailed to you by calling the clerk's office at nine-eight-nine-seven-five-nine-one-four-eight-zero. But please just vote, however it works, please vote. If you're interested in seeing your sample ballot, Google Michigan Voter Information Center, there's tons of wonderful information on there, this is the Secretary of State website. So things like your sample ballot, where you're registered to vote, you can register for the first time, all kinds of great information. So please take a moment to research what's going to be on the ballot so that you're prepared when it comes in the mail or when you go in person to vote. And then also, I wanted to touch briefly on the Human Planning Commission. This committee and the staff work so hard, please consider applying for this committee, and I'd like to thank them for their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Councilmember Williams. Has he joined us? Clerk, you know?
I've been here though.
Okay, good. We didn't get you on the roll call, so I wasn't sure. All right, Councilmember Williams?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I would like to definitely thank all of those that have spoken already, and I'll keep my comments very short. I want to remind everyone, although the, I know there's a lot of emphasis on the presidential election, I'd just like to remind everyone how important our local election is and everything that's going on at the grassroots level. I hope that we all pay attention to the things that are going on in our community, and I know we still need to pay attention to things on a national stage, but our community is very important, and I think that's where the emphasis needs to be given, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think I've covered everyone, and I have nothing to add to my fellow council members' comments, so I will pass. Madam Clerk?
Okay, Mayor, that takes you to the reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager, what have you got for us today?
Thank you. I have a few items for you, and one of which is that the city of Saginaw partnership with AM PM received the twenty-twenty Gold Addy Award and a special judges' choice award, both for the Great Lakes Bay region from the local American Advertising Federation. The city and AM PM received this recognition for their This Is Saginaw video, which was launched in July twenty-nineteen as part of the city's marketing and communications plan. The Addy Awards, the advertising industry's largest and most representative competition, sees more than forty thousand entries each year in local competitions nationwide. The mission of the awards is to recognize and reward creative excellence in the art of advertising. Receiving an Addy Award at the local level is the first step in a three-tier national American Advertising Awards competition. The city's marketing team consists of staff members as well as representatives from Saginaw Future, who are appointed to work with AM PM to develop the city's marketing campaign. The campaign highlights the unique offerings of Saginaw spreads a positive message of the revitalization taking place in our community. The special judges' award was earned for the video script and production written by former Mayor Greg Branch, who passed away in February of twenty-nineteen. Greg was also a brand strategist with AM PM and partnered with the city of Saginaw team to develop the This Is Saginaw marketing campaign and video. So congratulations to the team, and I think that's a testament of the work that Greg was doing for the city as well. The city, as you know, we don't have public relations or marketing staff necessarily, the city staff who worked on this, and apologize if I leave anyone out, but the team is Vicky Davis, Yolanda Jones, Jeff Klopsick, Matt Shitnick, and Brian Weiss, and I think a few others, and from Saginaw Future, Cassie Miller and Tom Miller assisted with this project. As you all know, this was part of the redevelopment-ready communities project through the MADC, and these marketing plans do get viewed nationwide. I was recently contacted by a local unit in Pennsylvania that is working on a marketing plan, and they viewed ours and liked the way it was done and had some inquiries about who we worked with. So congratulations to the team and AM PM for the assistance with that program. And the other item I wanted to talk about this evening is our Citizen Police Advisory Commission, our CPAC, as we were calling it. The ordinance will be introduced this evening from the meeting. As you will recall, some time ago, I talked to council about putting a group together that I would chair that would work on this, and that group included the city attorney, the police chief, the assistant city manager, human resources director, assistant city manager, and council member Reggie Williams served as an advisor for our group. What we would like to do is have a commission that will foster discussion and openness and provide recommendations to the police chief, myself, and council for policies in the police department. And I realize that there have been discussions by other groups about the need and potential duties of Police Advisory Commission. Our group, when we put together the ordinance, we took mind of state and federal labor laws, city charter, collective bargaining agreements, the civil service commission that is available in the city and required with public safety, and our other legal considerations. We also reviewed similar commissions in several cities to determine how they were formulated, staffed, how they operated, and what types of duties and activities they performed. We discussed these issues through calls and meetings and put together the ordinance that we think will work for Saginaw. Following are just a few aspects in the ordinance that I wanted to point out, and one of the purposes of the commission will be to provide a process for outside review of particular complaints and the department's or external agency's investigation and conclusion related to complaints in order to recommend potential changes in police policies or practices. That's going to be an important part of the commission. And the membership will consist of nine members, all of whom must be city residents, one youth representative from a local high school, one representative nominated by the local chapter of the NAACP or a similar organization active in the city, one representative nominated by the local chapter of the Mexican-American Council or similar organization active in the city, one representative nominated by an LGBTQ+ organization active in the city, one representative from a local neighborhood association, one representative who had previously been convicted of a crime and incarcerated for same, one mental health professional, one at-large member, and the police department chaplain. At least four members of the commission shall be female as well. Community outreach will also be a role for the commission. The community relations section of the ordinance, if you have an opportunity to review that, that's going to outline some important activities that we would like the commission to perform, including outreach to several different groups to gain opinions and recommendations. This can obviously be modified, especially in the future. Our belief, it is a solid framework to move forward and receive input from our residents. And those are the items I wanted to update on council this evening, and that concludes the management update.
Mr. Manager, are there any questions for the manager at this time?
I have a question for the manager.
Go ahead.
Maybe a question through the manager. I'd like to know if it's, can people that's incarcerated in Saginaw County Jail can maybe see absentee ballots?
I would refer that to the clerk.
Thank you, Manager Morales. If they are serving a sentence, they cannot, but if they're just in jail pending arraignment or sentencing, they are eligible, as long as they're a registered voter.
Thank you. So you said, I just want to be clear, I think I knew the answer, but I want everybody else to hear that. If they serve in a sentence, they cannot receive a ballot, but if they have a case that's pending, they can.
Any other questions of the manager at this time?
Just a quick comment, Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to commend the committee for working on the Police Oversight Committee, and I'm really excited to hear that list of that group. Should we confirm all those decisions? I think that that kind of diversity is really exciting, so thank you for your work.
Very good. Any other comments or questions for the manager? Anybody else? All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk. hearing none. Madam Clerk, next topic.
My next order of business is the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV Channel 191, and I'm asking if there are any exceptions by councilmembers to be noted by the clerk. Any exceptions? Any exceptions? One more time. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve all the consent agenda items.
So moved, Moore.
It was seconded by who? Who seconded?
Councilman Mellon.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda at this time? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is carried, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, you are now at Board Commissioning Committee Reports.
All right. Today, I would like to know if we have any reports from members of any city boards or commissions or committees. Any reports? No reports. Okay, let's move on then. Madam Clerk?
That takes us to appointment of board and commission members.
There are four of them. Are there any exceptions from the four to be noted by the clerk? Any exceptions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve all four appointments.
So moved, Moore.
Bench was seconded.
Bench was seconded. So moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, it passes. We are moving on, Madam Clerk.
We are at ordinance introduction. We do have one. It's an ordinance to add Section 12.042 Citizens Police Advisory Commission of Chapter 12 Boards and Commissions.
Is there a motion to approve?
Bench moves.
I'm sorry, introduce. Who is making the motion?
Bench moved.
Bench moved. Is there a second?
Moore.
Second.
Well, we'll say Forbes on this one. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the ordinance being introduced? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is passed. Again, Madam Clerk, I should announce, it is laid over under the charter provision.
Correct. Thank you. Now, we are at ordinance consideration and adoption. Our first one is to repeal Chapter 118 and replace with Sections 118.01 through 18.23, title Chapter 118, Licensing of Marijuana Establishments of Title 11 Business Regulations.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved, Moore.
Bench seconded.
Bench seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the adoption of the ordinance?
Councilman Mellon?
Yes, Councilman Mellon.
All right, go ahead. I would just like to mention, I would just like to mention again at this time, what I think will be one of the ongoing problems with approval of this ordinance and the outcome is the State Marijuana Regulatory Agency. We put ourselves in the position of having to follow their guidelines, and I find that they are very reactive rather than proactive agency. They wait for a problem to occur, and then they amend their rules that we have to work under. One of the main points as they began this entire regulatory scheme was that you had to have previously had a medical marijuana license to receive a recreational license for the first two years. Now, in less than a year of that being enacted, they are reconsidering that. They've not shown any level of consistency in how they regulate this. I find them more to be an agency concerned about boosting the use and sales of this product rather than regulating it. So I will continue my opposition to the adoption of this ordinance and the zoning one, although, again, the way we wrote them, the best course of action is to pass this ordinance and not pass these zoning ordinance. So.
All right. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? All opposed?
No.
And we need, Madam Clerk, I think we need a roll call?
Yes, we do, Mayor. I will, Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellon?
No.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Oystash?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
We have eight yes and one no. Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item?
My next ordinance is to add Section 153.061, title, Section 153.603, purpose, Section 153.605, applicability, Section 153.607, definitions, Section 153.609, approval procedures for marijuana establishments, Sections 153.611, authorize marijuana establishments, Section 153.613, consumptions violations, Section 153.615, penalties, Section 153.617, rights, titled Marijuana Establishments of Title 15 Land Usage.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Bench moves.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this ordinance? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk, again, I think we need a roll call.
Yes, we do, Mayor. Councilmember Bench?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protem Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellon?
No.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Oystash?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
We have eight yes, one nay, and motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item?
Next ordinance is to amend the official city map to rezon property known as 3304 State Street from B1 local business to B2 general business.
Yeah, Jane.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Bench moves.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on this ordinance?
Who was the second?
Second was Balls.
Oh, thank you.
We call you, I bet.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing no opposition, it is passed. Madam Clerk?
Our next ordinance is to amend the official city map to rezon property known as 3307 Davenport from B1 local business to B2 general business.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved, Balls.
Second.
It's been moved, and who seconded it?
Moore.
Moore. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, it is carried. Madam Clerk?
Our next ordinance is to amend the official city map to rezon property known as 3325 Davenport from B1 local business to B2 general business.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
I'll move.
Okay, I didn't catch a name, I need her. Motion, please?
Forbes?
Forbes made the motion. Who made the second? No, who made the first motion?
Scherzer.
Scherzer, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Councilmember Scherzer.
Yeah, if you say your name, it's easier for us to get that.
Who was the second?
I'll be the second on that.
All right.
Councilman Mellon, sorry.
Mellon. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Our next ordinance is to amend the official city map to rezon property known as 3430 State Street from B1 local business to B2 general business.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Councilman Mellon was second.
All right, Oystash, I think it was, moved, and Mellon seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
Our final ordinance tonight is to amend the official city map to rezon property known as 3446 State Street from B1 local business to B2 general business.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved, Moore.
Second?
Second.
Who?
Bench.
Bench seconded, thank you.
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? It is carried. Okay, Madam Clerk, I think we can move on.
Yes, our next order of business is resolutions. We have one this evening. It's the resolution to establish a Commercial Rehabilitation Act District for 218, 222, 224, and 226 South Washington Avenue.
All right, we do need a motion to adopt?
So moved, Moore.
Councilman Mellon, second?
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I think earlier it was indicated that someone might have some further information at this time. Would that be appropriate at this time, Madam Attorney, to have that heard now?
I believe there was a question that was, Michael.
Councilman Mellon has it.
Okay, go ahead with the question.
For Mellon?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yes. Mr. Tankersley, are you still on?
Yes, I am.
Could you explain to the council and the citizens how this resolution is the first step, a multi-step process, that you will be back before us later to continue this process?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. By accepting this resolution, the development, the commercial rehabilitation district exemption would ensure that the commercial development would be an economic success by freezing the property tax expense on the four parcels that have been read to you. At the approval of the city council today, the next step would be to go to the county of Saginaw to formally qualify, create the qualified rehabilitation district. At that point, the developer would come back before the council for final approval.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Mellon?
Is it? Well, partially.
Well, go ahead if you got more.
At this time, Mr. Tankersley, does the developer have in mind, in the third step of the process, when you come back for the certificate, what request for duration of the tax freeze you would be looking at, or that to be later passed along?
At this point, it would be for the 10 years.
Okay, the maximum, the 10 years.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions? All right, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Carrie's, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, you are now in miscellaneous business.
Well, we've covered a lot of business today. Is there anybody who has any other business or issues to bring up at this time? Any councilmember? Councilmembers?
Mayor, just a comment from something earlier.
This is Mayor, Member Oystash?
Yes, sir.
Proceed.
Yeah, we were talking earlier that they were looking for poll workers. I don't know if we've done this yet, and just a suggestion, and maybe we could try, maybe our social media person could maybe put some stuff on our Facebook and Instagram highlighting what these, you know, what these folks are going to be doing, or that maybe that could help. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other business, suggestions, questions, comments? Anybody? All right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Moore.
Bench seconds.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't expect any. All right, thank you. We are adjourned.